Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Norwalk. The League is a nonpartisan political membership organization which builds citizen participation in the political process. We are dedicated to providing information to voters to make informed decisions at the polls. My name is Deborah DiRizzo and I will be the moderator this evening. We will be hearing the positions on local issues from the candidates for District A Common Council. The audience is in listening mode only and can see all the candidates, the moderator and the timer on their screens. The candidates cannot see or hear the audience. All forums are hosted by the League and will be recorded and can be accessed on the League website and Facebook page. We will be asking questions prepared by the League of Women Voters followed by questions submitted in advance by Norwalk voters. These questions have been vetted by a bipartisan panel. The forum will end with a two-minute closing statement by each candidate. The order in which the candidates will answer the questions this evening were randomly determined in advance. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question followed by a 30-second rebuttal by any other candidate. The timer this evening is Jody Proct. She will hold up a yellow sign to indicate the candidate has 30 seconds left and a red sign when the time is up. So let's begin with the first question and the order of the candidates is David Huberman will be first. The first question is, if elected, what are your top two priorities?
Thank you Deb and Jody for working this forum tonight and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I think that my two top priorities if re-elected to the Common Council, number one I would say right now is the climate. We are facing a true climate crisis and as evidenced by the IPCC report which came out this summer. And I think that municipalities owe it to ourselves and our future generations to start to look at that climate crisis and see what we can do to begin to put in systems and policies to make sure that we are caring for our environment and creating the future that we want our children to have. I think it's very important. And the second thing that I would look at, that I would, I would say would be a priority for me is to really look at the equitability of Norwalk, that we are, that we are attending to our neighborhoods and our systems in a way that is equitable for everyone within the city. I think it's important that we share all of the city with everyone and that we continue to make Norwalk walkable and we continue to make Norwalk accessible and I think those are very, very important things for the future.
That's it. The second candidate is Chris Morales. Can you unmute yourself, Chris?
I have the same question as well?
Yes, you do. You want me to, no, you, you have the same question. We'll have the rebuttals at the end after all four have answered. What are your top two priorities if elected?
So my top two priorities here is in Norwalk, number one is, you know, figure out this whole, I live in the Wall Street area, you know, figure out this whole parking situation. What is really going on with our parking? Why are we driving small businesses out of this Wall Street area? I, I walk by Wall Street area all the time. Yes, climate isn't very important, but that is such a answer that I'd be hearing all over. But I really want to get down to what is really going on in my area. And second, second of all, you know, have a voice. My number one, my other priority is to have a voice for the people in my district. You know, I feel like we've been being ignored, no one's really listening and to have a voice here is very important. And I believe that I'm, have a strong personality. I believe that I could have a voice. You know, I'm bilingual, so I could, I could speak with, you know, multiple different audiences and diversity, diverse populations to help them out, to really, really understand what is really going on in my district, what is really going on in Norwalk. And this is something that has been an ongoing issue. No one has been listening to us, absolutely no one's been listening to us. We're driving small businesses out. There is a good fellow by the name of Byron who has been, you know, trying to open up his own bakery for the past seven months and, and, and continuing. He put over a hundred thousand dollars into this bakery and yet he's still closed. And we have, and then nothing's been said, nothing's, no one's doing anything. So I'm, I am running for the people like Byron. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Louis Estrela.
Hi, thank you Deb and Jody. Thanks to, for the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My top two priorities if elected would be, one, unifying and balancing our current council. We can accomplish a lot more if we work together. We can all advocate towards the same thing, have a unified voice, be more inclusive if we all work together instead of all us, all of us fighting towards the same thing and getting nowhere. And second priority would be definitely walkability and bikability of our entire district. If everyone is able to walk or, and/or ride a bicycle everywhere, we won't need to worry about parking. And that also helps out the environment as well. So if we, although I live a quarter mile from Wall Street, I have to get into my car to go anywhere near there. So once I'm in my car, I might as well go somewhere that has more diverse foods, you know, at least a bigger array. So, but if I was able to walk there, I could just go there and come back. Those are my top two priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nicole Ayers?
Thank you. I think my two, top two priorities if, when I become a council member is one, to have a sustainable neighborhood. When we're saying sustainability, I agree with some of my former colleagues. Our neighborhoods need to be walkable, they need to be bikeable, but they also need to be affordable. We need to make sure that people who want to stay in our district are able to stay in our district, that longstanding residents of our district are able to stay in their homes and they have the needed support that they have. I also am a very large component, a very large, not component, but a very large supporter of neighborhood schools. I think in our district, we have some very strong schools, but we all should be encouraging the support of strong neighborhood schools to support the residents that live here in District A. My second focus would really be on pro-aging policies. Now, in our 2020 census showed that we do have a lot of people moving in, but we do have a very strong foundation of people who have stayed decades in Norwalk and they want to stay in their homes and they want to have resources and they want to be known, want to have a viable part of the city. They don't want to be shut out, they want to be a part of the city. They have given their life, they have given their investment by buying homes in our city. And so I would really like to focus on pro-aging policies, making sure that our older citizens have the resources and the access to resources that will help to be sustainable. Thank you.
Okay. Do any of the candidates, would any of the candidates like a 30-second rebuttal? Chris?
Yes. So you do bring up great points, but I think our school system is not strong. We lack resources, okay? I think we could do a lot better. I think a lot more money could go into the resources around our school, specifically the elementary schools. Firsthand, my girlfriend works at Tracy Elementary School and she comes home every single day, tells me all about these, you know, stories about some kids who, who, you know, are misbehaving because there's not enough teacher aid. And, yeah. And that's, that was basically it.
Does any, oh, David?
Yes, thank you. I just want to bring up about, really quickly about the Wall Street area. Yes, the Wall Street area needs a lot of attention and I think that we are currently in the process of moving attention towards that. I commend Mr. Sanchez and really want that bakery to be there. I think it's a positive and, and it's an extension of Mr. Sanchez's already burgeoning businesses in elsewhere. And I think it's great that he wants to bring it here, but there are processes that do need to be followed within that and I'll say enough. Thank you.
Nicole?
Just wanted to add to the conversation about Wall Street. I think where we are, our shortcomings is that we need to reimagine that space in that corridor. We need to turn Wall Street into an entrepreneurial hub. We need to make sure that all of those businesses up and down that corridor are filled with things that bring flavor and taste and culture to that, to the city in that particular neighborhood. As a, as the president of the PTA at Tracy Magnet School, I, I understand Mr. Morales's position and the position of his girlfriend, but I...
Anyone else? Okay. So we'll go to the second question and Chris, you will have the first, you will have the first dibs at it. This is a long one. During the past, during the past budget cycle, our schools were not fully funded. This year, the differential was made up with federal COVID relief funds. However, these federal funds are limited and run out in two years. The Board of Ed CFO has warned that the city, warned, warned the city that the schools will face a cliff in funding when this occurs, resulting in cuts to the schools. As a member of the Common Council, which determines, determines Board of Ed funding, the largest part of our city budget, how will you address this issue and what is your view on how to properly fund the Board of Ed?
So, thank you for that question. And it, it brings me back again to the topic of, you know, small businesses. You know, small businesses are the ones that, that, that bring the tax money around here. And if you can't open the small businesses to help, you know, bring that revenue tax to this area, you can't rely on Hartford. As we've known, Hartford is, is where our, our, Norwalk area is getting more dense. You know, we're giving all this money to Hartford, but no one's really fighting for us in Hartford for us to get more money. Okay? So again, going back to, to the politics in my area here, we're, they're just doing too much to, to not open up small businesses. Small businesses are a key essential to our area, especially to Norwalk area and to the, to District A. Okay? So I want to make sure that the small businesses have a voice, you know, and they are number one priority. The, the, the community, you know, the small businesses, what is really going on is, is that's going to try to help us bring as much taxes, tax money to our community.
Okay, thank you. Louis Estrela, you're second on this question.
Yeah, um, well, you know, in my opinion, I wouldn't know what to do exactly at this moment about it. I recently heard from a common council member himself that, I guess, the Board of Ed and the Common Council had agreed to an efficiency study. You know, I would say we, you know, find, figure out, you know, first, you know, what the, I guess, the answers are, you know, were the test for the study itself, you know, whatever the numbers are. And then go, go, obviously move forward from there, you know, knowing something more positive or concrete as to what is going on. You know, I'm aware that the Board of Ed has a whole nother board, so they have their own policies in place rather than us just, you know, throwing money at them. We should definitely see what the efficiency study says first. Thank you.
Okay. Nicole Ayers, you're next.
So in dealing with the constraints of the Board of Education, I think it's important to bring to light that we will never, ever have enough money. I don't think it's necessarily about continually giving more and more money, but making sure that we are leveraging resources. As one of my previous colleagues said something about the efficiency study. The efficiency study will give us our next steps of how to address some of the larger issues of the Board of Education. But we also need to understand that the Common Council sets a cap. It is the BET that decides exactly what that line item, that budget item is going to be for the Board of Education. So it's going to take advocacy, collaboration and working together, not only with the Board of Ed, but the BET in the Common Council to make sure that we're leveraging resources. In addition, the, the Board of Ed does the best job that they can, but we need to bring in community partners. We need to bring in the nonprofit sector as well as the business sector to help strengthen our, our schools to the best of their ability. One of my colleagues said something about small businesses. We also need to look at how we fund our city, which is through taxing. And we need to be pushing more homeownership and less rentership, which will help us have a bigger pool of money to give to necessary resources.
Okay, thank you. Oh, David, you're last.
Thank you, Deb. Yeah, I just want to quickly say I agree with Mr. Morales. So small business is the wave that we need to ride and I think that Norwalk is positioned to become the small business capital of, of the southwestern Connecticut here and I think that's important. And I think that those are drivers. When we get into the budget cycle, the budget cycle is, is a, is a very interesting process. And with the Board, with relation to the Board of Ed, what we do is we give the Board of Ed a pocket of money and the, how they are spent, how they spend that money is statutorily protected for them to make that decision. So we as the council have to look at all of the factors of the fiscal responsibility of the entire city when we are weighing out how the budget money is put together and where we leave that cap. In this last cycle, the BET made the determination because of the federal funding that was coming our way that they could, they could flatten everything, hold taxes down, which was important coming out of the pandemic that we did that for our citizenry because taxes are, are, we, we need to attend to that and we need to make sure that we are being efficacious in, in how we deal with our tax structure. But the cliff that was referred to in the question is a potential reality that we have to make sure that we are looking towards our future with an eye towards not hitting that cliff. So in the coming years, we have to look at where we will be. We have to be very, very prudent with how we are, how we are allocating our funds. And we have to make sure that we are attending to the funds for the education so that the programs that my colleagues have spoken about can be maintained. And that's most important because the education of our children is the infrastructure of our future. Thank you.
Okay. So everyone answer that question. Are there any 30-second rebuttals? Chris?
So listen, bottom line here is that property tax funds are school. There's no doubt about that. Okay? However, property tax credit hurts our funding, specifically with the Poco. All right? Poco has been an issue for, I call it the Tyvek Temple, other people call it the Poco Temple. It doesn't really matter. It's ugly and it's right in front of my house and I stare at it every single day and, and, and it, something needs to be done. And what is really happening with the Poco?
Okay, any, oh, Nicole, you're, Nicole?
I just think that we also need to understand that, yes, property taxes do, is what the city uses to fund everything. We have heard a lot of newspaper articles and everything about the cliff. But common council members, along with the other boards that I mentioned previously, have to work to make sure that we don't get to the cliff. And I think the best solution to that would be opening to the nonprofit sector to offer some services, the business sector as well as the municipal sector. And having us all work together will answer the needs of the school.
Okay. Any, oh, David?
Yes, I, I agree. The Tyvek Temple is an eyesore and it's a problem, but that entire area is, has been tied up in litigation that is dealing with one particular developer who has decided that it's his way or the highway and that's the problem. And that is where we have to look for a solution. That's the problem. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Okay. The next question goes to Louis Estrela first. And kind of you've brought, you've touched on this a bit, but what are your ideas to jumpstart the stalled Wall Street development?
Well, we can't just keep trying to put businesses there after businesses after businesses because it's just one failure after another. We have to genuinely look at the entire area and see how to get the, the most amount of people walking by there at all times, either driving or walking. You drive through there now, it's not a very, it's not a very pleasant drive. You're either stuck in traffic or hoping that everyone does the zipper, which they don't. So in my opinion, the best way to build Wall Street currently at the moment would be, one, figure out all this litigation with the current developer in that area who owns the majority of the properties over there. And two, just genuinely do a proper traffic study and actually look at the roads and the parking spaces and where people are allowed to park and where they are not allowed to park because it's not a pleasant drive, not helping anyone. And it's, you know, there's, there's, there's not enough people that go through Wall Street besides driving through, but there's no, no, nothing to stop for. So we need to figure out a way to genuinely get more people walking down the road. You know, when you walk by, you look at something, you smell something, you want to stop because you might have a little extra time. Thank you.
Nicole? You're next.
I think we all can agree on the line tonight that we want that corridor to be a thriving neighborhood. As a lifelong resident of Norwalk, I have seen in the past 10 years the transition of the Wall Street area. I, I will attest that we are maybe not doing all that we can to revitalize that area. That's why I suggest such things as an entrepreneurial hub, a small business hub, or even maybe allowing some green investors to come into some of those areas. Additionally, one of my colleagues mentioned Poco. My response to the Poco situation is simply risk management. In business, business people have to consider risk management and to avoid, when possible, or minimize impact of things that have happened in the Poco situation. But as common council members, we also need to look at risk management. We need to look at risk management from a municipal situation. We are charged with protecting the city and working with investors to make sure that the city is not taking a loss. Right now, we're taking a loss because that area doesn't look as good as many of us, I think all of us agree, Ekidmet Look. But I think the solution really is to be open and transparent with what has gone on, to fix our practices and to move forward in a more global way, increasing investment and diversifying our investment as things like green investment.
Okay, thank you. David, you're next.
Yeah, Wall Street, it's, it, that entire corridor, my colleague Ms. Ayers is absolutely correct. It, it, it needs attention and I believe that the, the idea that Mr. Stray had brought up about a, a traffic study is spot on. We need to look at how the traffic flows through that area. We need to look at the size of the street, the size of the sidewalks so that we bring in an inviting area that people want to go. We need to take a look at the corner of Wall Street, Belden and West Avenue and figure out possibly a better solution for that area. There's wasted space there with the way those, the islands and the turn lanes exist. And that's all part of a larger study that I think needs to be done. We need to look at the parking. I think the parking is, is, is something to be attended to. And the thing is, is that there is now currently a, a study in place that we're using the ARP funding to do, to study that area, to take a look at that, to create how we can create a more inviting corridor in the Wall Street area. Street trees, wider sidewalks, places where we can have restaurants that are out on the street. And these things, these things are in process and we're looking at them. And then we need to fund the work and that becomes the next part of this is to do this, it needs funding. And we have to then go and look for those funding streams. I think Wall Street is a potential jewel. It also speaks to the walkability and the connectivity of the city. If we can take people who live up in the area of the town green and they can walk down into Wall Street and have this wonderful corridor and then go up along West Avenue and head down to Matthews Park, to the mansion, or go to the mall, we create connectivity between our district and District B down to the south with Washington Street. That's important, that's how we thrive. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, you're the last to answer this.
Okay, great, thank you. So I don't really think we need any more studies. You know, someone could come down here, go get her, go get a cup of coffee and you get a parking ticket within the first five minutes of being in this area? That tells you something. You know, enough with the studies. I've been here for four years. I walk the Wall Street area every single day to go get a cup of coffee at Cafe Aroma. I go grab a, a smoothie at Mr. Mango's and every single time, the number one topic is, man, my customers are getting parking tickets. When was, my customers aren't coming back because they're getting another parking ticket, another $25. I go get a haircut at, at Raffi's and he's, you know, talking about that his customers are getting parking tickets. We don't need more studies. We need to fix this, okay? I've been here for four years and the only thing that's been done to this Wall Street area is we painted new parking lines. It went from, from straight lines to diagonal lines. That's not much. And, 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 and we've been having these parking authority come and attack our customers with parking tickets every single time they're here. I'm like, give me a break, like, someone's just coming in and gathering a cup of coffee and they're giving them a ticket within the first five minutes. That's not right. That is not right. I am calling for the parking system to get audited. Why do they need a $5.7 million budget? You know why? Why can't, can Byron open up his bakery? You know, it's, it's, it's the parking, it's the politics in this area that is really bringing down this, this area. Mr. Milligan, he's trying his best to bring this area around. If you see Hype Room, if you see Mr. Mango's, if you see Bisho 83, those are all his retail spaces and they're all doing well. He is doing more than the city is doing for us. Thank you.
Okay, are there any rebuttals? Oh, everybody, oh, Louis?
Oh, yeah. So, so one of my colleagues said that the sidewalks need to be widened and we need street trees. The sidewalks are wide enough. There's plenty of street trees. They've recently planted trees over there already. The problem is the roads and the parking, like, there's, it's not a friendly road, it's not inviting. It's just the parking. Just like my colleague said, you know, you don't want to get a ticket every time you go there. But at the same time, I also wouldn't praise Mr. Milligan the way my colleague does because...
Oh, it's only 30 seconds. Who, I think David?
A lot to unpack in 30 seconds, but I'll, I'll, I'll bring this point up. A number of years ago, there was basically, there was a free-for-all in parking down there. And what happened, and I think this predates Mr. Morales living down there. What happened was the business owners then said, you got to do something because the residents are parking all the time on the street and our customers don't have a place to park. So there has to be balance. We have to look at this in a balanced situation. You can't have no parking and you can't have, you can't have, you know, lockdown parking. So we have to look at what that is. Thank you.
Any other rebuttals?
Look at Main Street. Look at where Valencia is. They have free parking. It's thriving over there. You know, a, a Good Hope Restaurant, the barber shop over there, Taco Takira. It's all, everything's over there because they have free parking. People want to go where there's free parking. People don't want to go to a place where they have been ticketed more than once, more than twice, now they have to pay $25, $60, et cetera. That's...
Nicole?
I think what my colleague, Mr. Morales is speaking about is city procedures, not necessarily a city policy. If the procedure is broke, we definitely need to fix it. But we also need to understand that we can't make everybody happy. And if we come with that down and said, no, nothing is going to get done. We need to have safe traffic areas throughout the city. We need to have a, a comfortable traffic flow throughout the city. And the way we do that is to make sure that our policies and procedures...
You can, you can finish your phrase.
The way we do that is to make sure that our policies and procedures are reflective of the people which we service.
Okay, I should have mentioned that if it's, if you're, you're in the midst of a sentence, you can finish. Thank you. Any other rebuttals? Okay, so the next question goes to Nicole. What is your vision for Norwalk's future in 10 years? And what will you do as an elected official to move us toward that vision?
We live in a great city, but my vision is simple. I want a city that my children want to live in and my children are able to live in. My vision for Norwalk is to make sure that all citizens, irregardless of where they live or reside, have a safe, welcoming place to live, that our civil servants, our police and fire are fully supported, that our school system has resources that allows us to make sure that the next generation... That our school system has resources that allows us to make sure that the next generation. Is a generation that is equipped to run this city that I love so much. My vision for the city is simple, to be a livable city, a welcoming city for all people. And a city that is focused on our future and knows that we may have some bumps in the road, but collectively. It's always better together and teamwork really does make the dream work.
Thank you. Um, David. Your second.
Yes, ten years from now, I, I too would like to see a city where my son is still living here. And I'd like to still be living here and enjoying all of the richness and walking around. And I think that that's important. Ten years and beyond, we want to be looking not just ten years, but I think we want to be looking twenty, thirty years out. It's, it's an important, uh, uh, thing that we have, that we are funding our city with the idea of affordability. And that we have what, uh, Ms. Ayers just spoke to, that the police and fire and our teachers and everyone can also live here. In, in, in affordable city where they can walk around, where they can do their grocery shopping and not necessarily have to get in a car to go do it. I think that those are important. I think that that type of connectivity is what brings us together and makes us stronger as a city. We're very strong now and I think we're in a great place and we are very well positioned to continue that kind of growth. And I think that's important. I, I want to circle back just really briefly for a moment to the, just on the Wall Street area. And just to say that what I, what I mentioned before about the study was not a traffic study, it's actually an engineering study for the entire area. And there are funds to do the study and there are funds right now to actually execute what, what we come up with from the study. So there are things in process and those things lead to this ten-year plan. Sustainability, connectivity, affordability, walkability. I think those are important. And I think those are the things that we have to maintain and look at with an eye to the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris, you're next.
Thank you. Uh, so in ten years, uh, one of my vision is to give people a voice. Once people have a voice, these problems will be fixed, okay? Uh, to, in this Wall Street area and, and some of the areas around here. Like I've been saying before, people are not being listened. Are not being listened. No one is really listening. So if you give people a voice, majority of these problems will be fixed, okay? Uh, and hopefully in ten years, you know, I, what I really want to do is I, I want to build a family here. I want my kids to go to a Norwalk public school, um, and I want the schools to have great resources. The, the resources that they need, okay? I don't want them, you know, I, I want to make sure that there's enough teachers, uh, per students. Um, I want to make sure, you know, uh, that. Traffic around this area, you know, eh, the kids could get to school on time and et cetera, that's great. You know, but I actually want to make sure that our schools have, you know, there are enough resources where my kids could thrive. Uh, my kids could go to high school here and eventually, um, you know, eh, go, go to a great university, uh, within the state or anywhere else. But that is my vision. Give people the voice and give the schools the resources that they need.
Thank you. Louis, you're last on this one.
Yeah, uh, my vision for the city in ten years is a united city, a balanced city. A city that communicates with each other. Um. The pandemic is, in my opinion, the pandemic put us in a different place than we used to, so things are done differently. So there's a new. I guess a new reprogramming of the way things are done. A lot of things, people go to work, a lot of people work from home now, so things are just different. I don't think that the problems that we currently have are just going to go away in ten years by saying, oh yeah, this is what we need. I don't think that District A revolves just only around Wall Street. Um, you know, there's more to District A than just, than, than just Wall Street. Um, you know, it's just, we, we need a city that works together. You know, that's, that's my vision for, for ten, in ten years from now, where we're all working together. Using one voice to communicate and all advocate for the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any rebuttals? Chris?
Uh, so going back to that, uh, that traffic study, um, there's not, you can already tell, Poco has killed this area. That's it. Poco killed this Wall Street area. That's my rebuttal.
Nicole?
I think I would like to. To the conversation that our diversity in this city is something that we should be proud of. And not only the diversity of individual people, but the diversity of thought. And so in ten years, we should really be elevating the. Conversations that we're having at kitchen tables and on street corners and at Cafe Aroma about where we want the city to go. And it should be a collective conversation representative of all tongues, representative of all cultures. And representative of all people because we are an intergenerational community that we should be proud of.
Okay, um, any, any other rebuttals? Oh, David?
I just, I, I actually want to build for a moment on, uh, what Ms. Ayers just said. I, I think that it's, that we have to create the continuum and have these conversations and continue to have these conversations. We, we, we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our future and it's important because we are a rich, diverse community. We're also a community that the census is showing that people want to live here. They want to come here and it's important that we attend to that. And we continue to, to talk about these things and continue to be open about them. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, I think this, this is actually going to be our last question before the closing, so and I probably, I don't think we have time for rebuttals for this. Um, the last question is, if elected, how will you solicit input from citizens in your district? And David, you're first.
Thank you, Deb. Um, well, a- as running for reelection, um, I've been out knocking on doors and talking with people. During my, uh, tenure on the council, I have been accessible. I have been accessible to the citizenry. Anyone who can, wants to reach me, my email is there, my phone number is there. You call me. I've had many, many constituents who have called me over the two years that I've been on the council and have spoken with them. And, uh, I try to work and function as a problem solver, try to find solutions. Um, something that my, uh, current council, uh, mate, uh, Kadim Roberts and myself started in April. Towards the end of this pandemic is once a month, we would go out into the community. In a city park, uh, we were in the town green, we were in Freeze Park, we were up at the corner of Belden and West Avenue. At the, the Cornerstone Community Church. And we said we'd be there on a Saturday from two to four, come talk to us. And we had numerous constituents come by and talk to us about the issues and the problems that they face. And, and those that, that talked about the good things about being in Norwalk and what they, what they enjoy. I believe that that openness is important. And as if you are reelected, I will be as open as I am now. You call me, you email me, you message me on Facebook and I will respond. And I think that's important. And I also like to say that it's, it's about meeting the people and talking to the people. That is how we know what to do because we are servants of the people of Norwalk. Thank you.
Uh, Chris, you're next.
Uh, yes, so what I plan on doing for the community, uh, is, is hosting a weekly or monthly community gathering. I have a small business, I just opened up a small empanada truck. You know, we could all meet at my empanada truck, you know, empanadas on me, coffee on me, and, and you tell me what's really going on. I want to hear what's going on. I am here to, you know, give the, uh, people the voice, uh, give them a seat on the table. Uh, I'm going to be as transparent as possible. Um, I'm gonna let them know what's really going on, give them up to date, uh, on social media, phone, um. You know, email, et cetera. Eh, you need to know what's going on. I am going to be the one that's going to be telling you. If you have an issue or a problem, come to me, okay? I'm always going to be there. I live right off of Wall Street. I walk these businesses every single day. We, I, I am part of, of the, of the Wall Street Neighborhood Association where we meet once a month, all of small businesses. And, and they let us know what is really going on and the biggest issue is the parking. The small businesses are suffering from this parking situation that is just getting out of control. When I'm telling you, people don't want to come to Bank House because they got a ticket. People don't want to come get coffee at Cafe Aroma because they got a ticket. People don't want to come to Mr. Mango's because they got a ticket. That's just driving our taxes money away. Uh, and I want to improve all that. I want all businesses to be thriving in this area. I want people to be spending in the Wall Street area and, and not only in the Wall Street and areas around, okay? Uh, it, it's just, uh, Wall Street area is very dear to me because I walk it every single day. Thank you.
Okay, Louis, uh, you're next.
Yeah, what I would, um, what I would do, I guess, to communicate with people, get the people to communicate with me is really not much anything different. Um, I already, I'm, I'm heavily involved in the city of Norwalk in all aspects of just community projects. Um, part of the reason that I'm running for common council is because at every event, people would always have complaints about this, complaints about that. So I would always direct them to, you know, like, hey, you're a council member, you should talk to your council member. A lot of times in my district, a lot of people didn't even know who their council member was. So I figured, okay, you know, I'm already involved, it's what I do, it's what I like to do. So let me take it to the next step and that is why I'm here because I, I'm already involved in our walk. I, I talk to hundreds of people a week. I, I'm out there, I walk the beat, like, in all parts of Norwalk, not just District A. Thank you.
And Nicole, you're last.
Um, I think that we also need to understand that one fit, or one type of service is not going to service all people. So when we're looking at communication, I think we need to also know that we need to have multiple forms of communication. And that's something that I would have as a common council member. I fully support it as the DTC, District A Chair, David Kadim and Goffrey. When they met with their community every, um. Month and had people, had people, gave people access to them, I would continue that. I would also continue things like community conversations, but not only have community conversations at Mr. Morales's food truck. But let's have community conversations at the senior center. Let's have community conversations at the high schools. Let's have community conversations at the library. Um, we also need to understand that traditional forms of communication work. People can pick up the phone. I am a lifelong resident of Norwalk, have lived in the same house for over. Forty-some odd years. I'm easy to find. My family is easy to find. Um, I think we also need to use the city's customer service, um, services in the hotline for the city. As a way of understanding things that are concerns of our constituents. Once again, I think communication transparency is key. We serve at the will of the people and if we're not able to touch the people, hear the people and see the people, any and everything we do is for no. So I would be an open representative, asking that people communicate with me openly as I communicate with them.
Thank you. Any, uh, oh, I, I forgot to say, I, we don't have time for rebuttals, sorry. Um, so thank you candidates so much for answering our questions. We will now begin with the closings, the two-minute closing statements. Uh, each candidate has prepared a two-minute closing statement. Um, I was gonna say, I, Nicole, are you okay with going again? I was gonna do reverse order. Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Um, I would like to appre- uh, appreciate the League of Women Voters for giving opportunity for the candidates to speak to the city that they love. Thank you. Your work is necessary to ensure civil political discourse. The city of Norwalk is doing many things correctly. We are the jewel of the sound and the beacon upon the hill. But with all of our accomplishments, there are always room to grow and to do better. Room to make sure that the future for our children and their children is bright, sustainable, accessible. And filled with the components of a thriving city. We must be intentional in looking forward and securing a future for the city through common sense practices and procedures. We have to have a diversity in thought which will afford us the opportunities to tackle such of, so many of our challenging. Um, topics such as traffic, health and safety, green development, education, youth programming, pro-aging policies and infrastructures. I am a supporter of families, seniors, job growth, green space, homeownership, entrepreneurship, small businesses. In the urgency of now. Our motivation to continue to work towards those things that define us as Norwalk. If elected to the common council, my focus will not be if Norwalk is a big town or a small town. But rather if the quality of life is at the forefront, forefront of all that we do. I have had a lifelong investment in this city. My advocacy, my community work, my community service work started when I was a youth. And now continues here at this school level as the PTA president of Tracy Magnus School. A school governance board member and other organizations and community boards that I sit on. D is not only for Democrat, but is also for being able to deliver, being dedicated and being a decision maker. Which I already am and which I will be for all citizens in Norwalk. On November second, I solicit your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Louis.
So yeah, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for, um, holding, hosting this forum and, um. Like my colleague said, um, you know, this says, you know, keep discourse, not good stuff. Um, so the reason I'm running for Norwalk is because, you know, it's enough, en- enough is enough. Um, we need people who is actually going to, you know, make the tough decisions and or get their hands dirty to get the job done. Um, you know, District A needs better representation, not just when it's an election year, but just all around in general. Um, you know, like, there's no, like, just. It's, it's a little, it's, you know, it's a little frustrating to, sorry, I just lost myself. You know, like, um, to, to be, to live in a city and then just. Be, be involved, you know, pretty much be in the middle where, you know, the loud mouths over here to the left and loud mouths to the right. And then you're always in the middle thinking, but, you know, let's try something different. Let's just try to get along and all work together and then. Hopefully we can make something good happen at the end. Um, that's the reason I'm running for Norwalk. I want to be a voice for the people of Norwalk. I want to speak on their behalf. I want to be an echo for the people of Norwalk. I don't have any vested interest besides I want better schools for my kids. I want to be able to walk down, walk my kids a double wide stroller down the street without having to duck between cars. Um, so on November second, I ask for your vote to be, you know, could, because since I'm committed to be a voice for the city of Norwalk. And to work for the city of Norwalk like I already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chris?
Uh, thank you, uh, League for hosting tonight's event. Deb, Jody, you did a wonderful job. Um, so I'm asking for a vote because this election is about representing Norwalk and giving District A a voice. A voice that has been silenced by the city of Norwalk. Enough is enough. I want to bring accountability, balanced communication back to the city. Uh, it's funny, David, I've been living here close to five years and I really haven't heard your n- name or seen your name until just the passing recent, uh, elections. Uh, so, uh, very nice to meet you. Uh, why is my district one of the highest ticketed areas in all of Norwalk? I want to audit the parking system. Is the budget really seven point five million dollars? Yet we're losing customers to that, to parking, due to parking infractions? What is really going on with Poco? I moved here close to five years ago thinking the building I call the Tyvek Tempo would be done by now. Yet the only thing that has happened is they put new Tyvek wrapping around it. How's that progress? Why can't Byron open up his bakery? He's the reason, he's one of the main reasons why I'm running for all the Byrns out there who are looking to start a small business. But, but just keep getting neglected by the city. Decisions are being made behind closed doors. The redevelopment agency is a perfect example. I want the council to do better. I want transparency. I want discussion and debate. We can't all be yes people. You know, I was listening to, uh, uh, to the, 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 uh, common council at large the other day, uh, and. Everyone's voting, yes, yes, yes. I, I agree with my colleague. I agree with my colleague. You need, you need transparency, you need discussion and debate. Uh, my name is Chris Morales. I'm a local business owner. I'm here for the district and the community and I'm here to give a voice. And we, that, that voice that we desperately need and I hope I have your vote on November second. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the last candidate is David, a woman.
Thank you, Deb, and thank you, Jody, for the time of, um, a spirited evening tonight. Um, Chris, all I can say is that, uh, I've been around in a, I've been in all of the businesses down in Norwalk and I, I walk that area very regularly. Um, first thing I'd like to say is, uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening's forum. And thank you to my colleague and running mate Nicole Ayers and to my opponents, Mr. Straya and Mr. Morales for your time and thoughtful energy tonight. And this is what it's all about. Democracy in action, coming together to share our views and thoughts that, uh, you, the voters can make an educated choice on November second. I am honored to have served the residents of District A for the last two years. And I'm proud of the work that we've done on the common council during this time. Norwalk faced a difficult period during the pandemic and I feel that we came together, worked hard and are so much stronger. Norwalk faced a difficult period during the pandemic and I feel that we came together, worked hard and are so much stronger for it. We learned that we are a city of great strength, compassion and resiliency. And with our leadership that rose to the task, I'm honored to live here. If you send me back to City Hall, I will continue to champion the issues that are most pressing to our future. And we're in a climate crisis. We need to make strong policy that will guide our city through the decisions that we will face for our future. And this policy needs to be reflective of the diversity that makes Norwalk so rich. It needs to guide our decisions about equity, education, development, affordability and sustainability. And this policy needs to be baked into the fabric of our infrastructure so that we ensure our children and our children's children will enjoy Norwalk as we do now. I want to thank you for being here tonight and for taking the time to listen to us all. Please remember to vote on November second and make sure that you have your neighbors vote as well. And remember, everyone all together, that's how we make a difference. Thank you.
Oh, thank you candidates for your participation this evening and thank you to the audience. For more information about each of the candidates, you can go to Norwalk's Voter Guide on vote411.org. And don't forget to vote on November seventh. Thank you.